Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Joint Committee of the School Committee and City Council of March 26, 2018. And on the agenda tonight will be van pool transportation. Tonight from the City Council, we have Counselor Daniel President, we have Councilwoman Gladys LaBrow Martinez, myself, I'm Dennis Burks from the School Committee, and we have Mildred Leflie from the School Committee. We also have Superintendent Dr. Stevens-Strike, and we have the Chief Financial Officer, Anthony Soto. A little background information about what brings us here. It went in front of City Council that there should be some moves to transportation. It went in front of City Council. Some of those moves were made by the School Department. After those moves were made, there was discussion about how it would affect some of the workers who worked for the current transportation company. City Council filed those orders to this committee, which is the Joint Committee of the School Committee and the City Council. So those orders are here tonight. We've gotten communications from both, the recommendation of what to do with the transportation contract from the School Department. We've also gotten communications from the union, from that Transportation Department also. So tonight will be discussion about what that looks like going forward. And there will be, we'll have to take a vote tonight. There was a sign-up sheet for public discussion. There were thirteen names on here, and to make it formal, we need to vote on that public discussion. So what will happen is, we'll be up here, we'll open it up to Mr. Soto and Dr. Strike, and Dr. Strike to speak upon how the decision was made to go about the transportation contract. After that, if anyone up here has any questions that they want to ask Mr. Soto or Dr. Strike, we will ask those questions and have discussion. The public discussion will take place when that's finished. If you are speaking, you will have two minutes to speak. You can make your statement and/or ask a question. If you direct a question to someone up here, that person will answer your question. Then when that question is answered, then your time is up, and then the next person will get their two minutes. So there won't be any back and forth discussion during the public discussion. So that'll be the rules of that. So right now, I'd just like to, so that we can get that piece out of the way before we even get to public discussion, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to have public discussion tonight?
I'll make a motion that we allow the public to speak.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So that was a little background information about what brought us here tonight. And now I will ask Mr. Soto, Anthony Soto, to please talk about where we are as far as the contract goes and bidding, and what's gonna happen, and what'll happen next, and what that's gonna look like.
All right, I'll start, and then I'll let Mr. Soto. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Joint Council. Just to give, by way of background, over the last two budget cycles, or seasons, I should say, we've been asked by the City Council multiple times to look at our costs that fall outside of net school spending for schools. So the City Council has, the City of Holyoke has a responsibility to fund the leases and transportation, which falls outside of the funding, the minimum funding that it has to be allocated for schools. And transportation is the obligation of the City of Holyoke to provide its students to get safely to and from school. Over the last few years, we've been asked by the members of the City Council to look at ways of being more efficient and to more strategically manage our transportation costs. And we were told pretty directly to do that. We established a committee to look at that, that included representation from the School Committee and a representation from the City Council. And even though we, as a school district, see no benefits from that savings, that's district, that's us, that's money that goes back to the City of Holyoke, which they can choose to invest in schools, or they can choose to invest somewhere else. And as part of our responsibility as a department of the City of Holyoke, we did what we were asked to do. Two years ago, we examined the central office lease, and we downsized our office space and reduced our lease payments for the central office. And then this year, we went through a process, going back as far as the summer, to look at savings in transportation and manage our costs. Mr. Soto and I and the team looked at different options, and we had, we were presented with a proposal that used vans to transport students with disabilities. It represented a huge cost savings to the City of Holyoke, and it also, in our opinions, was what we thought was more efficient and safer for students to go to and from school. There are many school districts in the state. We are not the first district. There are dozens of districts that already transport students using vans, and we currently transport many students using vans. Durham was our transportation vendor. We currently have many of our homeless students transported with vans, special education students, and then, of course, we have mini buses and larger school buses. And so we felt that this was in the best interest of our students and had the added benefit of also managing what have been rising transportation costs. And I do want to make a few things clear to this body. I've heard a lot that it's my decision only and that it, on transportation contracts. Well, as many people, as many of you know, transportation contracts come and go in three-year cycles, and our three-year cycle was up, and we made a decision to look elsewhere, which is in our purview. And in any district, a contract can be issued, and ultimately, the superintendent would sign, and the mayor of Holyoke, and the mayor would sign. And in this case, I have made the recommendation, based on the information I've received, to move forward with a contract with the van company. I have not signed any documentation. It's sitting in the legal office at the City of Holyoke. But ultimately, while people think that it's my signature alone, my signature along with the mayor's signature is what makes the final decision. And ultimately, the city, the school system of Holyoke, while I believe, from the information I have, and I'm looking forward to hearing from others tonight, it's in the best interest of the taxpayers and the children of this city. I also, at the end of the day, this doesn't, this is not resources that come back to the school. We did what we were asked to do. We were asked to be good stewards and responsible departments for the City of Holyoke. We did what we were asked to do, and at this point, if the City Council and the mayor of Holyoke would like to go in a different direction, that's their decision. That ultimately will be his decision to make, but as the superintendent of schools, I, with the information I have, I have to give what I think is the best recommendation moving forward. So I just want to make sure that's clarified. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Mr. Soto?
I think you hit everything on the head. The only thing that I would reiterate is that this decision was not made by one person. You know, we did have a committee which included a member of the School Committee, a member of the City Council, a member of the mayor's office, and the city solicitor. We weighed out many options, and that committee was put together with one goal, is to make recommendations to the superintendent on how we can more efficiently and effectively provide transportation with minimal impact to students. That was what we were asked to do, and is what we've done. Another thing that I would add is, transportation to special education students is exempt from bidding. I know that there were a lot of concerns around the process behind this. As Dr. Strike mentioned, we are not the first community to do what is being proposed. North Hampton does this, South Hadley does this, East Hampton does this, Fitchburg does this, the list goes on. There's many, 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 many communities that provide in district and out of district specialized transportation using vans. That's all I have.
I just want to add that any suggestion that we would compromise safety or the well-being of children has been distressing to us, because we currently transport many students by vans. And if the suggestion that we would be compromising our students' safety even today, right now, today, tomorrow, we have children being transported in vans. We have many parents who, in fact, we had a parent email us today, who urging us to put their child in a van, because they thought it was a safer experience for their child. It's distressing to see much of what's out there about safety issues related to vans. We have looked at this carefully. We would not be transporting kids today if we felt that there was a safety issue with children. But again, that's something that we'll make the recommendation, and ultimately, the City Council and the mayor will weigh in on what they think is the, is in the best interest moving forward. That being said, as a school district, we no longer want to hear that our transportation costs are not manageable, because we think we found a solution that's both better for kids and better for the taxpayers of the city.
Any questions from anyone on the committee?
This is for the Dr. Strike or Anthony, either one. Now, can you just tell us, over the three-year time span, I mean, can you just give us some simple numbers, so we know, like, you know, are we saving three dollars, or are we saving, you know, what is the cost savings? We're saying there's a cost savings. Just let us know how that broke it down.
Under this new proposal, we will be saving anywhere between $500,000 and $800,000 in FY '19 alone. And then, that number increases, because in the current contract, there's CPI included of 3%. And with the new design, we have a flat rate for three years. So I would be, I'm projecting, at a minimum, about a $2.3 million savings over the course of three years, but it could be as high as $3 million.
Is there currently a contract now, or is the contract that we currently have, is it lapsed and we're kind of in limbo?
There is currently a three-year contract, and we're in the third year of that three-year contract. This was a year that we did have to go out to bid. Every three years, we go out to bid. We did recently go out to bid for regular big bus transportation, and decided that for special transportation, we were gonna utilize the, an exemption that exists in Chapter 30B, which allows us to engage into contract negotiations without bidding.
Is the company that currently drives, you know, I hate to say the term "big buses", but that's what we're using, are they, will they be continuing on with the contract?
The bid opening was on Thursday, and they were the only, they were the sole bidder on the big buses, so yes.
And this organization currently doesn't have the capabilities or has the machinery to do the smaller vans?
Uh...
Was it, was it two separate bids, or was it one bid?
It was one bid for regular ed transportation, and then we did not go out to bid for specialized transportation.
All right, thank you.
The question is, I'm not clear. You said that this current company, are there, have the capacity to do what we're going after another company? I wasn't clear about the answer.
Are you asking Durham or existing vendor?
Yes.
They currently don't have the van, the van capacity right now in this district to do it, but I'm, they're a big company, I'm sure that they would be able to provide this service.
Thank you. So I have a question. I know that City Council has requested on numerous occasions in respects to cutting down on costs for transportation. But my question is, when proposals were being sought, did we, as a district, actually sit with Durham and kind of look and see how we can be more cost-effective, or was it more of looking out to other companies, vendors, that may provide the service for much cheaper?
We did work with Durham last year, towards the end of the year, if you remember correctly. One of the things that was pretty controversial was adjusting our school start and end times. And we did that after working with a consultant. We adjusted our school start times so that we can maximize the monitoring that we have available. At the beginning of the year, we did contract out with a routing specialist who helped us with a new system that we implemented. And I was getting some feedback from Durham that, you know, that they could probably help tweak the routes. So what I did was put a freeze on any changes in the second week of September, and allowed Durham to reach out to their drivers with recommendations for a period of seven full days. I allowed them, I'll take any recommendation that you have that will allow us to run these routes more effectively and efficiently, and I'm not gonna take any more changes from the routing specialist. They did that, and we implemented every change that they had. But to answer your question, yes, we did work with Durham. We did work, through Durham's management team, they worked with their drivers and requested that, any changes they had for that period of seven days, and we were, we gladly implemented all of the changes.
So just as a clarification, you're saying that at the beginning of this school year is when you provided the seven days of feedback from the drivers. In respects to routes and development of routes, who exactly is in charge of deciding what bus the child's gonna be taking, or van, and providing that information to Durham? Is it the district, or is it Durham that decides the routes?
It is the district who provides the information to Durham. We have a routing system called Versitrans. We enter, you know, hazardous walking zones in that routing system, and we enter all student addresses, and based on the school committee's policy and mileage thresholds, it tells us who requires transportation. The special ed office works with families and goes through the IEP process as well, and anyone that is determined to receive specialized transportation, that information comes to my office, and we enter the information into our routing system and tell Durham basically what routes to run.
Have you found any issues with that routing system? Has there been maybe that it's not being so efficient? We might be having extra vans or buses going to a specific location, roads for different students, or are we saying that that program has been efficient? So the reason why I'm asking is, do we think that maybe even the program is what got us into a problem even with, with cost?
I do not think so. I mean, this program is used widely across the nation by many, many school districts. I don't believe that it's a problem with the system itself. There, I mean, it may be, there may be issues where, you know, the system doesn't know that there's construction going on, on a certain road, and that that road may not be accessible. And those are some of the issues that we were running to, into at the beginning of the year, where we, you know, Durham expressed that there were issues. We heard them loud and clear, and we allowed them, a period of a whole week, to work with their drivers and recommend changes, and we implemented every single change that they had for us.
I really don't want to ask so many questions, but I feel, okay. So, my only concern is with special education. I want to make sure that our students that do have an IEP, especially in respects to bus monitors, that is not a specific item added to the IEP. All it says is, does the student require transportation or not, and then you would check it off. Are we saying that in order for these students to have a bus monitor, it has to show up on the IEP?
That is, that's the current practice, and quite frankly, there's probably never gonna be a van that doesn't have at least one student that requires a monitor. So in this new model, we do not plan on reducing monitors at all. If anything, we'll be increasing them.
Well, I do want to say that for, just as a personal, I know for a fact that my son's doesn't have a monitor on his IEP, but I have a monitor. So if I understood you right, you're saying that it does have to show on the IEP. That's where I need the clarification, because then I need parents to then request emergency meetings to have their IEPs amended, to have a bus monitor added to it, to ensure that we don't lose that service.
But even today, the practice is, it has to be, a monitor has to be on the IEP for a student to get a monitor on a bus. And that's, obviously, the IEP is a legal requirement we have with the family. And so we put, we would put a monitor on the bus if it's required by a student's IEP. It has to say it on the IEP.
Any other questions?
So, I think Dr. Strike sort of gave the best introduction to the decision, I think, for those who are watching and actually here. The City Council, as you know, we do have a deficit that we have to kind of close the gap. I think the pressure was put on the School Department, as you mentioned, to reduce even the size of the building where they're located, to be able to reduce the cost of this rental or leasing building, and now it's to the level of the busing to be reconsidered. And I, and I think that, my understanding is that regardless of the way that this ends, that many of you, whoever maybe have a chance to be part of the new company, if this is not the company that they decide to stay with, but I just want to say that, you know, we're here to hear you out, you know, this is your chance to do so, and try to see, you know, what we need to know, so that we can make the right decisions. Thank you.
All right. At this time, since there's no more questions from the committee, we'll open it up to public discussion. I'll go over the rules again. Anyone who is, wishes to speak, you will have two minutes to make your statement and/or ask a question. After you, after you ask your, make your statement or ask your question, if you have a question, direct it to anyone who's at the table. They will answer your question to the best of their ability, and then that's your time, and then the next person goes on, so there won't be any real rebuttal or anything like that. With that being said, the first speaker is Jeff Jones. If you will please go to the podium. The microphone is on there.
Just want to make sure, yeah, we're on. We all set?
Is it on for a second?
Yeah, if I go down, this low, it is, yeah. Thank you. My name is Jeff Jones. I'm a union representative for Local 1459 servicing this unit at the current vendor, Holyoke Schools. Most of these people out here in orange vests are part of the bargaining unit that we represent. Some of these people have been driving 25, 30 years. The past practice has usually been that if there is a change in vendor, those people are, the union is recognized by the new vendor, our members have the right of first refusal to take up those new jobs, and the existing or the outgoing union contract is used as a template for a future bargaining agreement. None of that was done. I take strong issue with your characterization that this was done in a democratic manner whatsoever. We learned about this on March 1st at a pre-bid meeting for what we thought was going to be the transportation, but turned out to be only big bus, meaning that roughly 150, give or take a few of our 170-member units, jobs were on the line. When the current vendor inquired to Mr. Soto about what might happen to those people currently existing, and I can't quote him precisely, but to paraphrase, it was stated that, "Well, we hadn't really thought about that. I guess we could talk to the new vendor about that and have a discussion." So that's, that's the regard that you took for the existing workforce. These people are members of the community, they send your, they're students to your, to these schools, they work in the community, they pay taxes in the community, and they were not consulted in a democratic manner whatsoever. You are essentially proposing to replace a school transportation delivery system with a van delivery system. Students are not packages. They're little flowers, they grow up, they develop, they become human beings. I found it very interesting in all these comments tonight that there was barely any mention of safety. It's all about cost, cost, cost.
That's your time, sir. Thank you.
If I could just close very quickly. You can put lipstick on a pig, and it's still a pig. You put a school bus sign on a van, it's still a van.
That's your time. Thank you. The next speaker is Kathy, and it looks like Galarza, or Galah. Galarza, thank you.
Hi. I've been working for Durham, but I've been working for Holyoke Public for 20 years. I drive in the school bus, I drive large, I drive minibus. Most of us drive the minibus and the large buses. There's only 15, 70, drivers. The rest of us are CDLs. The rest of us take our job, all of us take our job seriously. When you say, you come in here and you question this, and you question that, we, every year, have to go through our runs at the beginning of the year and take off students that are not on the bus, who might have been here, and we hand them back in. We did that. We do it every year. The first year you came out with your program, I personally handed mine to your person from Versitrans. And every time they gave me a new kid, my run was never fixed. I still had a student on that didn't live in here in Holyoke, lived in Springfield. I had a student that never rode the bus because he couldn't ride anything, because his parents had taken him. For a whole year, they'd never updated my run. And I stood there, went on a supervisor, faxed it to the School Department. I personally handed it to them. Most of these people here who hand in their runs do not get them updated. This year here, I've handed my run in. I have no run in my bus that says what my run is, because I've handed it back. The girl was expelled from school, still there. The two kids, I drive skate. The two that, my first two, are off the list. Now, School Department says we have to go by the routes, exactly. Your Versitrans told us to go down dead-end streets in a large bus. Your program told us to take minibus down the wrong way, even large buses down the wrong way on a one-way street. A large bus going down a dead-end street is not a three-point turn, it's a 10-point turn, a large bus. We have buses that go right, left, 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 and start right back out where they were originally, to go down the street. Why'd they have to go all around that circle to get to the same street? Your program's not working.
Thank you, Daddy. That's your time. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Pam Murphy.
Hi, my name is Pam Murphy. I've been a bus driver for 17 years. I've been with Durham for five years. I am also the trainer for Durham School Services. I've been a trainer for seven years. I want to talk to you about the differences between a CDL driver and a 7D driver. CDL drivers have a lot of requirements. I have packets for all of you to take a look at versus CDL versus 7D. CDL, we're required to have at least 60 hours of training before we're even licensed. That's part of our, um, part of our training. So, before it goes to, we go test. We have to do a pre-trip, post-trip. We're, it's all, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm watching what's going on. We're required to have physical core check, driving record, four written tests at the registry, general knowledge, air brake, passenger, and school bus, 20 hours of classroom before we go test, 40 hours behind the wheel. Then we have to go to a closed course, drive our buses between cones. We have to perform a student drop-off pickup railroad. There's multiple things, and it's all in those book. I gave you a 7D book versus a CDL book. And then we have a couple pictures of van, van pool at Donahue. That's how they're loading their school bus, is from the back. So, you know, you want to talk about how we load and unload our children? None of us unload our children from the back. None of us load them from the back.
Thank you, Pam. That's your time. Thank you. The next speaker is David Pairs, or David Bodies.
Good evening. My name is David Pairs. I'm a, I've been a school bus driver for 31 years. I lived in Hoyoke most of my life, went to all the public schools. I ran for school committee 10 years ago. And you know what? It's a disgrace what's going on now. You know why I'm finding this problem? Because I care about our kids. I'm not saying you guys don't care, that's why you're here today. So, you could try to listen. I'm going to try to explain to you one little thing here. Everything is coming out from money. We met, we met, with the city councils, they mentioned money. We met, with some of, some of the other officials, they mentioned money, money and money, money. Let me tell you guys something. My kids are worth more than $80 a day on your guys' time. My kids worth that. They go to school. But I'm going to tell you something else. Mr. Soto, with all your respect, there's a package here. Stay, I don't know if you haven't got it on Google or computer, anybody can see it, about school van transportation safety. We have school vans, but we only have like, just a little bit. But on a daily basis, carrying all these kids you're going to be carrying. You're going to eliminate minibus. They are built for, to transport school children. That's why they call mini bus. It's not a van. A van are built the wrong way. There's more than, than, than our neighbors, Chicopee, Tahali, that's why they measure, they use in this transportation. The states, they ban the use of vans. I don't know why Massachusetts haven't done it yet, but I'm going to tell you something. There's all those cities that don't want, like Chicopee. You know why? Because they are regular vehicles. They are regular vehicles. I'm going to tell you something about saving costs. Our system, as professional drivers and marketers and employees, works. 31-year experience as driver, zero accident. Man, I must be doing something good.
David, thank you. That's your time, sir. Thank you.
All these, Mr. Soto, your superintendent, because I can't help you spell your...
David.
You see, all these employees, they all work for you. You're going to change cans and bottles? You know what you guys are doing? You guys are shopping, I don't want to mention Walmart, instead of shopping a Sears quality product? And I'm not going to say nothing wrong about vanpool.
David, that's your time, sir. Thank you. The next speaker is Yadi LaBuenos.
My name is Yadi LaBuenos.
You can move the mic down to you a little bit.
My name is Yadi LaBuenos, and I am a parent with a child with needs. I am supporting all minibus and monitors. I really would like my child on a minibus. They're safer, there's more space, and there are accommodations for their special needs. I really, really like the monitors because they assist my child with accommodations. The van does not have any accommodations for kids with special needs.
The next speaker is Anna Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Anna Gonzalez. I'm here to support the drivers and managers of Hoyoke. I'm against having my child, my children, in vans, due to the fact that I have three special need children on IEPs, and they all need the support of the monitors on the bus due to their disabilities. The minibus is safer and they have more space. My children have anxiety. They cannot be around other children, like in tight spaces. They're not able to cope with that. The monitor on the bus that my child has is a beautiful woman that helps my child every morning on the bus, even if he's having a bad day, she's there for him. And to me, it's a safer, and you people talking about money, 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 my child is worth more than $2.8 million. You can talk about money this and money that. My child needs the big buses, they need the minibus. They need the drivers that know how to drive these buses, they need the monitors on there. My child has an IEP, anxiety. He's depressed. He has, he's on the spectrum. I have three of them in Hoyoke. One goes to Hoyoke High, one goes to Tri-County School, and one goes to, um, Donahue. So, they're all up placement. But every morning, those buses are there on time, those monitors are there to help them on the bus, and if they're having a bad day, my child can be flipping out. What's going to happen if they're on a smaller bus confined with other children, and they have an issue where they're going to hit another kid? Are you going to be responsible for that? Because the parents are going to come to us and say, well, your child flipped up on the bus and they, they hurt my baby. Are you going to stand there and tell me that I have to be arrested for something my child did on the bus because you don't want to spend the extra money or you're thinking about all this $2.00 million?
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Yvette Colone.
Hi, my name is Yvette Colone. I'm a parent. I'm here to support the bus drivers and monitors. I do have a question for the superintendent, which I was kind of surprised that she said the city council had a meeting with you, because I was there to, to support the bus drivers and monitors, and they were shocked. They was not aware about this. So, how is it that you're going to sit here and you're going to say, oh, no, we sat and we talked about this, about cost effective? Because they was not aware, they were surprised that we were there. They had no idea about this. Okay? And that's why I'm here today. I'm here to support them. Because again, my child is special need, and I never heard about my child and the IEP that he needs to monitor. But now, I'm going to call my advocate, and I'm going to have a meeting to redo my IEP. Okay? Because my son, he's special need, okay? He has anxiety attack, okay? Like, what's going to happen if the monitor is there to support him, okay? And he hits another child? Y'all going to be responsible for that? Because that's why they're there. They've been here for 25 years doing their job, and they're going to lose their job, okay? We need them, because they know our child, okay? When they're having a bad day, when they have a good day, okay? They're there, so they know. And yes, they might change their routine, they have a different monitor, but they are aware of the situation, and it's important for them to be there, okay? Bad weather, good weather, they are there, okay? So, answer me this. I was there and I spoke for them. When did they agree to make cuts? Because it's about making, um, saving money, because they was not aware about that. The superintendent's...
Thank you. That's your time. That's your question.
Yeah, so, um, we, we were asked last year at budget time to look at our transportation costs by the city council, and so, we put together a committee that met throughout this school year, that included a representative from the school committee and included a representative from the city council.
But the premise was not invited.
And, right, we made a recommendation based on the information we have, and that's the recommendation that we shared around moving to vans.
Yeah, but the bus driver didn't know, the premise didn't know, we vote, I mean, why can't we have the right to convene that meeting?
Well, I, I just want to, I, I know the question, I did talk about safety in my comments, and I, I, there is not, the information that I have read and received, we have, we often will move children to vans because of safety issues on minibus. So, from the information that we've received and we've looked at, there are just as many arguments to make about vans being safer for kids as well. So, when we made the decision, we had, we had many conversations about how this would be better and safer for kids.
Better for who?
To be, it's better to have smaller, fewer, fewer kids on a van, there's less chance for being distracted. We only have eight, we put...
Was it eight students on a van? No more than...
No more than eight students on a van. And as I said in my comments, we have just as many requests for families to have their children ride on vans because they feel like it's safer for their children to ride on vans.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry, Yvette. That's your time, that's your two minutes. Before I call up the next speaker, I'm going to go over the rules again. You have two minutes to speak and ask your question. You get an answer, that's your time, and that's it. There's not going to be any back and forth, so we must respect those rules moving forward. The next speaker, um, looks like Patrick Burke or Paula Burke? Patricia Burke? There we go, all right. So, Patrick?
Yeah. All right, I'll try to be succinct. So, you know, we, you know, we've been trying to do as much research as we can, you know, on the company that you're about to hire. They traditionally did, you know, work with transporting homeless students and out-of-district students for many districts. Very small amount of work. Many of the districts that, that you work with have, there's no reporting requirements. And, you know, we talked about that with Soto, that there weren't existing reporting requirements on vanpool. Now, our concern, again, is that if you didn't have reporting requirements to begin with, why are you going to trust the company going forward? We know it's a fact that minibus are safer than vans. The chances of dying in, or being fatal, or being injured in a minibus, okay, are 75, 70 times less than any other vehicle. That's from the National Traffic Safety Administration. Various associate state, you know, national associations keep making this point that vans are not as safe, they're not built to carry children. So, the fact that you're going to put 70 vans on the road is not helping student safety. Now, again, my concern with, you know, with vanpool is that they recently were bought by, by what, private equity groups. All of a sudden, they have enough money to buy lots of vans and say, hey, we can save you money by, you know, replacing CDL drivers with van drivers. It's like, okay, why don't you go into the schools and fire all the teachers and hire people who don't have the same requirements? You'll save a lot of money that way. But that's the wrong decision. It doesn't make any sense. Now, we know that the city council has brought up concerns about saving money. Well, guess what? The people in this room are willing to work with you on that. The people that have been dedicated to careers transporting children safely in this city for over 30 years are willing to work with you on that. But you did not give them the opportunity to have that discussion. And you're going to keep, so, again, with all due respect to vanpool, they do some, they, they can do the little bit of work they're doing, but they should not be given a whole new kind of work that they're not prepared to do, that national laws and national regulations say that should, vans should not be used.
Thank you, Patrick. That's your time, sir. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dan Clifford, UFC.
Good evening, everyone, school committee members and city council members, and most importantly, good evening and congratulations to our hard-working men and women who transport those kids every single day. They transport those kids under less-than-ideal conditions. It's extremely difficult dealing with unruly kids, sometimes unruly parents, with all due respect, their parents had spoke, difficult administration sometimes, but they've always done that job to the best of their ability, and they've done it very safely. They've transported the very most precious cargo that you have in Hoyoke, and that's your schoolchildren. And let me tell you, when we're talking about cost and we're talking about money, I know the receiver has a charge here from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to save money. Mr. Soto is head of budget and finance. He wants to save money. So, why would you go and do a contract behind everybody's back and not go out to bid? The fairest way to get the best possible price is to cast as large a net as possible and see how many people are interested in bidding on the work. Just to reach out to someone and say, can you do this type of work for us? And I know you've said repeatedly that it's not necessarily required under the state statute. Well, the heck with that. Sometimes just because you don't have to, don't mean you ought to. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rosa Gonzalez.
Hi, I'm a parent of an autistic child, and I'm very concerned of my son's transportation. My son is autistic because he got other conditions. He cannot be in a real small bus, and he cannot be in a big monitor, because he has, he's a big guy. And he can be aggressive sometimes, too. Because of the city saving some money, I would like to save my son's life. I don't want him to be hurt in the bus. And I understand that you guys say is that he needs to have monitor in his IEP. This is the first time I hear that he have to have the word, that he have to have monitor requests in his IEP. So, by the next meeting, I'm going to be asking for that to the school department, because this is my first time listening to this. So, I hope the city is going to pay for a monitor for my son, and you guys will have the money that you guys are going to be saving to put a monitor in any bus that you put for my son's transportation. Because you saving money, so I hope... Because you saving money, so I hope the city will have money to pay for my son's monitor too.
The next speaker is Diana Figueroa.
Hi, my name is Diana. Um, I've been driving for about four years. Um, I'm also a parent of a special needs child. Um, but since I don't have a lot of time, what I'm just gonna say quickly is, um, like, three years ago, we had an accident in a big bus on Lincoln Street. The accident, I don't know if you guys remember it, it was really bad. Thankfully, the kids that came out of that bus just had scratches and bruises. If that, no one was seriously injured. So I just want you guys to imagine if, um, a van was hit by that. I don't think the kids would've came out the same.
Next speaker is Kayla Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Kayla. I'm here to support the drivers and the bus monitors. I have a four-year-old kid who's autistic, who has an IEP, and I want her to get the best things possible for her to be transferred and to be watched over in the buses. I agree with parents who were talking, especially the previous one who said that, "What about if a van was get hit that hard with another thing?" It's not possible. How are the children safe in there? It's much smaller, um, kids are tighter in, they don't have their space. What about with children who have special needs like mine, who gets aggressive, who can't be too close to all the kill, to all the children? Because she feels like she's getting, how do you say, like, tight in and she can't have close people to her. Also, drivers to vans. Any person can drive that? Any person who has a 7D, whatever it is called, compared to a driver who has experience with a CDL, who drive much bigger things that have to be aware of the surrounding and spaces? Someone spoke about downhill, that's correct. They get loaded from the back. What is that? Like, children who are sick or have certain needs and are together with other children who don't have, how can I say? Who have special needs, but are not the same special needs, but they're together in a bus, but they're separate. You know what I mean? And you guys wanna put every kid in just vans without having bus monitors? People who take care of them? People who are there, who know them? You know, we have to watch for our children. We, our weather here, how is it? It's not pretty good when it gets snowstorms and there's a lot of accidents. I'm pretty sure that minibuses are way more better in, uh, on the road than vans.
Thank you, Kayla. The next speaker is Sylvia Robello.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Robello. I'm a retired public school Springfield teacher, and I also have a son who's disabled, a grandson who's disabled, lives with me. He has several poses in a wheelchair. This news that you are deciding, um, to change the minibuses for vans is very upsetting to me. Um, not only I, to reiterate what they said about accidents, we all know, despite all the rhetoric that's been said here today, that even in accident, uh, a minibus can hold the impact much, uh, safer than a van can. The wind, when, when the weather is inclement and there's a snow on the ground. We recently, a few months ago, maybe a year ago, there was a shooting on Appleton Street, and there was a school bus in the middle of that. Now, if my child was in a minibus, could they have with so, with, um, withstood the impact of a bullet? Hello, that's like a no-brainer. Then, the next issue is money. My grandson is worth the world to me. And there is no money in the world that will can pay for his life. And I am tired, as a resident of Hoyo, of, of having the most vulnerable of, of, uh, populations having to pay for the budget deficits of the city. They have nothing to do with the money that's missing. If the city is coming up short, these other departments, like the police department can say no, because the safety of our children and the safety of the residents of Hoyo mean more than the money that's missing. And it's not therefore that that money is miss, missing and we have to pay, pay for it. Hello, on the backs of the most vulnerable in the city.
Thank you, Sylvia. The next speaker is Margarito Lopez.
So, I just had surgery, so. I'm a bus monitor. I've been a bus monitor for almost thirteen years. And I've worked with all types of students. They're all wonderful. If you don't know what it is like to not have a monitor on the bus, if your child, the child is having anxiety, or if they're having a seizure, or if they're choking on a can because you know they're gonna sneak one in their pocket and eat it, how are you guys gonna help with just one person working, watching them and driving? With the minivans, alright, minivans, they pull, stop, they, lights are on. Cars keep going by no matter what. I work in a minibus. I do high street. When I cross, I almost get hit with cars all the time. So you can imagine a minivan with that solo driver, no monitor. Kids would run out, if they're autistic or not, they would run. If they don't have someone holding them, they would run out that street. You know, when you have kids, I have a daughter, and she's my world. When I'm working on that bus, those kids are my world. My responsibility. And every day, I... When they're sad, I make them happy. I have, I have a kid that he's severe, severe anger issues. And he used to curse and cuss and whatsoever. I go, "What's wrong? What's going on?" If you don't become eye-to-eye level, understand them, to get them calm, finding a clause that will keep them calm. And if you don't have anyone, the driver's not gonna be able to do that. The driver's gonna just be driving and looking over their shoulder once in a while. With the monitor and a driver, it's teamwork. We work together as a team, no matter what happens. If I can't, they help me, but we keep the kids calm. Thank you.
And the last speaker tonight will be Maria Gomez.
Yes, my name is Maria Gomez, and I worked for Hoyo Public School for twenty-two years. I got several things to say. School department, change your... Sorry. Make, make changes, uh, without looking into things first. Example, putting kids on bus that another bus is already in the area. How come you wanna save money? If you got eleven buses in Hoyo High, which it never happened before in twenty-two, twenty-two years that I've been here. Seven buses in Dean, we usually have four minibus and one wheelchair in each school. We never seen that before. So, um, if you wanna save money, drop your versor trap program. They are not familiar with the city of Hoyo. If you check your system, you will save more money. General Public recognized yellow bus as the buses, not van. Even former chief of police went through that line. Thank you.
First and foremost, I wanna thank all of you for being here tonight. I wanna thank you for the service that you provide to our children. I know mine is serviced with a Hoyo Public Schools van. Um, and the monitor, she's great, and so is the driver. I myself am a parent of children with special needs. I've had them for the past twenty-five years. My youngest one is twelve, and he himself has been diagnosed with mental health issues. So I know what it's like to ensure that your child is being transported to school safely each and every day. I know what he can be around with, and I know who he can't be around with. And I'm really fortunate and happy that I have a very good bus monitor and a very good, well, van driver and bus monitor. What I do wanna say, and what I do wanna reiterate on, this is not about the work that you have done. You guys are amazing people and have done an amazing job with our students and with our district. What I do wanna reiterate on is that this was asked by city council. It is up to city council to decide what exactly they are willing to do. I personally would kick you guys, but that's not me. That falls on them. But it doesn't mean that you guys didn't do the work. It doesn't mean that the reason that it went somewhere else is because you didn't do the work. You did what you were asked to do. Am I fond of the program by what I've heard? No, I'm not fond of the program by what I've heard. But that's something that the district needs to look at. I do have a few questions, especially with these pictures. I am hoping that this is not gonna be what we're gonna be seeing if we do end up going through Vanpool, which is having a student center through the back of a van. So if, hopefully that's not gonna be exactly what we're gonna do. The other thing is, I need clarification in respects to licensing. I see here that the drivers here go get a CDL license, but I'm not sure what 7D drivers get, so is that just a regular license? That everybody has? And you just go and get a certificate? Oh, okay. No, but maybe you guys can answer that. Alright, well... That would have to be with the chair, but thank you, guys. At this point, I really have nothing more to say other than thank you guys for everything. I'll make a motion that we allow the trainer to speak.
We'll allow the trainer to ask the question that will be answered.
So going through the question again, so in respects to the bus drivers, so we have the bus drivers, the mini drivers, and van drivers through Durham.
Yes.
They currently hold the CDL license as compared to what other bus services and maybe Vanpool, um, they are 7D certificate drivers? So exactly, what type of license shirt is that between the both of you guys? Or the both?
The 7D drivers, to get a 7D certificate, they just have to have a physical, go to the registry, take a exam, written exam, and when they pass that exam, they know right then and there, bam, they're a 7D driver. They pass, they wait for their certificate in the mail.
So that's really not a license, it's just a certificate?
It's a certificate.
And it's a regular, just a regular driver's license?
It's added to their driver's license, that's all it is.
Okay, and then the CDL?
The CDL, we are required to get four, um, we have to take four tests at the registry, written exams, pass all of them. Then, we have to train for sixty hours in a classroom and behind the wheel of the bus. We are required to be first aid certified now. That came down from the state a couple of years ago. We have to do a course, closed course, which we have to maneuver our bus between cones, doing parallel parking, alley dock, offset backing. Then we have to go out on, we have to do a pre-trip for the examiner. We have to, um, do an air brake test for the examiner. And then we also have to go out onto the road and perform, verbally perform for them, a student drop-off, pickup, railroad. And at that point, while we're out on the road with her, she is allowed to ask us any question that she wants to ask that pertains to our CDL book. We have to know everything that's in that book because she can ask whatever she wants.
So, and is there annual recertification? Is there annual training? What exactly does it entail in order to maintain this commercial driver's license? So does this take over even your regular driver's license? Like, are you guys effective in some way, even if you're not working?
Yes. So if we are not working, we are still held to a higher standard for driving, um, in our own personal vehicles. If we get a speeding ticket over fifteen miles an hour, we can lose our CDL for that offense. We have to maintain an excellent driving record. In the 7D manual, you'll notice in the beginning, it says they're only required an adequate driving record. We are held to a much higher standard. Our van drivers that we have, we have, what, fifteen? Fifteen van drivers. They do the same meetings that we do because we have to have eight hours a year from the time, it usually happens, it's consistent with our birthdays. And we have to have eight hours of classroom time within that year to renew our, it's called the DPU card. So we hold our 7D drivers to that same standard. They are mandated by Durham, our company, to attend all of our safety meetings, and those are held monthly.
Thank you, I can see that your manual is much thicker than theirs. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You really know your stuff.
I wanna thank everyone again for coming out. I also wanna go over what I said in the beginning. Um, the decision on the contract isn't going to be made here tonight, but it's all, but it's very important to hear from, um, everyone at the table and everyone involved, um, with transportation in Hoyo. I also wanted to just say that, um, some of us up here are parents, myself included. I have three children, two of them who went all twelve years through, um, Hoyo Public Schools. Uh, my daughter is... Uh, my daughter is a, is a sophomore in Holyoke High School now. Um, and as a parent, um, I can relate to a lot of the things that you were saying, especially looking at, um, the accident pictures of the accident that happened on, um, on Lincoln Street. I can relate to some of the concerns of safety, um, as far as gun violence goes as well. That's just, just doesn't pertain to school buses though, uh, but also pertains to some of the schools as well, as we found. Um, evidence of gunshots, uh, down at Morgan School also. Um, so I'll share, with that, I'm gonna share a story with you also. Um, not to, um, say that my feelings about what happens with this transportation bid is persuaded by this, but there's a lot of what ifs. And when my oldest first started going to school in preschool, he started on the bus. And it was the beginning of September, it was very hot, it was only the first week of school. And we were outside the house waiting for him to come home, which he didn't. And we waited a while. My trust in self, I asked my wife, said, "Just hold on, he'll be here, you gotta trust him." And we waited, an hour passed the time he was supposed to come home before. We called the transportation department and said, "You know, our son should have been here a long time ago, where is he?" And no one knew. All the buses were back parked in the yard, but no one knew where my son was. All the buses, they said, were cleaned out, "We'll go check them again and make sure." And they wanted to check them again, and my son was sleeping in the back of the bus. If we didn't check, that what if? I don't even wanna think about that. So there's a, a hundred what ifs. What if your school bus is shot? What if there's an accident? There's what ifs every time we walk out. Now, as, as an educator, I'm a teacher as well, and I've been teaching for the past twenty years. And I've seen Vanpool and how they operate. I've seen other, I've seen Five Star, I've seen Durham, um, I've seen, um, First Student, all the bus operations, I've seen them. Each one to me is equally safe. Yes, there's smaller, uh, vehicles out there, of course, but they're all equally safe. And with the monitors on them and with the GPS systems in there, with the cameras in them as well, because I've had to overlook at video of things that have happened on the vans. Again, what if? On any vehicle, anything can happen at any time, you never know. We send our children out there, I say "our" children because I'm a father first. Before I'm a teacher, before I'm a school committee member, I'm a father. And I send my kids out there with everything that's going on in the world. So I worry too. It's not just you, so when you talk, I feel you, I'm with you, I understand. And then the last part, being on the school committee, sometimes it's an awful job, and I hate doing it. And we've went a long time, um, years of not being able to give teachers appropriate raises. A lot of the cuts went at the expense of teachers and students. A lot of the times, we had to eliminate jobs and not allow teachers to come back. Sometimes we had to cut teachers flat out, secretaries among that, and the students miss out. The very people that we're talking about tonight, keeping safe. We also have to talk about keeping them safe in the schools. And we have an opportunity to build new, state-of-the-art, more safe school buildings. And that comes at a cost. It's not the cost of our children. The cost, it, it comes at a cost of how we're gonna build this structure, this school, that our children deserve and should have, and it must be safe as well. Our city isn't able to do it at the time. The city asked the school department to find ways to save money in order to be able to do such a thing. And that's what we have to do. The school department came up with a plan, one, to consolidate the, uh, the central office, where they used to have three or four floors and went down to two because the city pays rent for the school department's central office, they didn't. The city council asked the school department, "Where else can we save money?" "Where else can we save money?" Not at all, I said it, I have it too. I have children too, it's not against your children, not at all. I, I am saying, I'm not saying that money is more important, I'm saying where some of the decision came from and what people are thinking about as we go forward. There is no one, on an individual basis, and I went back to that before, my children, two of them are special needs as well, had their difficulties on the bus. I'm just bringing up all of the factors that are going to be looked at when the time comes to make the decision and what has to be done. So, with that, I will say... And no... No, it isn't, and you know, we said that before. So with that, we, we have city councillor Rebecca Lisi. Um, I'd like to, someone make the motion to let city councillor Lisi speak, please.
Thanks, thanks for letting me.
House lady.
Thank you for having me speak to you all this evening. Um, I want to note that the city council did make the request of the school department to look for cost savings in an almost eight million dollar transportation, transportation budget. Um, and there's been other areas that the city council has asked the school department to, um, find savings. And for the most part, the school department has been very responsive, and we do appreciate the responsiveness which with you have been addressing our issues. Um, our financial issues, budget issues. Um, but at the end of the day, um, I think that we have to think about what the face of that savings is, right? So, on one hand, we have the school bus drivers, the monitors, um, and these are folks that are making living wage jobs with the union. Um, and I, those are people that live in our community, and I don't wanna see those jobs um, fly out the window because that hurts our community just as much as perhaps the budget. Excuse me, I'm not done speaking, gosh. The deal is here, there are ways to save money. It seems that we haven't explored all options. That moving to Vanpool is one option. The folks in this room have presented other options at this meeting and to the city council in terms of, um, rerouting the routes, um, figuring out other ways to build in cost savings. And part of the issue, and I, I mentioned this when I spoke with, uh, Drs. Wright, part of the issue of having receivership is that a lot of the meetings, despite having representation from the community of the city council and the school committee members on that transportation meeting, um, the meeting wasn't held in terms of an open meeting where the public could weigh in. And there are, uh, and there's information and expertise that people in this room and, and community members have that they, that could be helpful in making that decision. I think at the end of the day, the bottom line is there. Excuse me, I don't need the side comments, I'm really tired of this.
Excuse you, that's enough, you can keep speaking.
Thank you, and I would appreciate that if the comments keep up, that you wouldn't mind as the chair...
You have one more minute to speak, everyone had two minutes to speak.
I'm not speaking as a member of the public, I'm speaking as a city official tonight, thank you. And if my time is going to be stepped in on by someone who can't share the, the time and manage the times that I have, the voice that I need to make my points here, then that, that's another issue. Anyhow, I think, again, there are members of the community, people in this room that have expertise, who because the meeting that you had as a transportation committee was not an open, public meeting, you were not able to access that information. So I think the two things that we need to know today is, number one, when is the decision going to be made by the school committee? Where is the ability to, um, have folks in this room offer information and other options for how the cost savings could be created, achieved? And I think the folks in this room should have a chance to create the nearly eight hundred thousand dollars a year savings that you're projecting. Okay? Um, when I hear, uh, school committee members say that this is all the, the city council's decision, we have one vote, we have one vote up or down on an entire transportation budget. And, you know, there, there's more than just the Vanpool, uh, service there. So I, so I think that I would like to have, uh, more of an understanding of where we can impact this decision. So it's not just a, you know, up and, up or down decision on, on, you know, one line item, that we really understand the contours of what we're getting in that, um, decision on the, of the transportation budget. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, and I'll go back to the decision isn't being made tonight. Um, we, I would like to see if there is a motion to say that these orders were complied with, orders were to have these two items come to the joint committee for discussion, community discussion, and further hear about the transit, uh, transportation bids. So is there a motion to, uh, say that this was complied with?
I'll make a motion that it was complied with and send over to the city council, to the finance committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So what that did was, after tonight, um, this discussion will go back to city council. The city council side of the joint committee will, um, send it to, to finance where, um, this can be discussed even further. Um, for people who have, uh, questions about other places where cuts may be made in transportation, or if anyone else has anything that they have to say about it, uh, when the finance committee meets, or after the city council makes that recommendation, um, this will be brought up again there.
Do you mind if I just say, I just wanna, um, thank everybody for their comments tonight. I appreciate, uh, especially the parents who came and spoke. Um, I, I, I know some of the faces out here, and, um, I, I've listened and written down what people have said here tonight. So I appreciate, uh, this many people coming out. I just, again, I just wanna reiterate, um, this decision was not made. Um, all about money was made because we have, uh, there's a lot of commitments we have towards wanting to improve our schools. And, um, we, there's so many competing interests in a city. Um, and just from the school side, our, our school buildings are in desperate need of replacement, desperate needs of replacement. Um, but the windows don't, the windows don't open. Uh, we have, uh, buildings that aren't, have, we haven't had a new building in this, uh, in this city since this building was opened in nineteen eighty-nine. We're asking this city to build two new middle schools that our children desperately need. Our kids do not deserve to go to school in some of the buildings that they're in today. So we're working on many fronts. This was a, this was a proposal intended to, uh, not compromise safety at all. We, we believe that it would actually, um, support improved services to kids while also managing costs. Now, if the transportation, I just wanna be absolutely clear, so there's no confusion. Transportation is the city of Holyoke's requirement to provide its children. It falls outside of the spending that we use to fund teachers and fund materials and resources. That is a city's commitment. We were asked to do something, we did it, to, to offer a proposal that we thought made sense. Now, at the end of the day, if the city council, and ultimately the mayor who will sign the contract, feels like that's not in the best interest of the city, we, as a school district, we support that. We're part, we're a department that's part of the city, okay? And so I just wanna be clear on that. I, I very much appreciate everything you presented here tonight. I, I know the mayor, mayor and I have spoken many times. Um, and ultimately, if, if the city wants to, uh, wants to go in a different direction around transportation, that is the choice of the city. We s- simply submit the, um, the invoice for transportation every year. We did what we thought was in the best interest of the city. I, I realize that a lot of people out here don't agree, and I respect that. You are all citizens, many of you live in, I certainly respect those of you who live in this city and have, and your children in our schools, and I very much appreciate what you brought here tonight. Um, and I thank you for engaging almost, in almost every case, respectfully here tonight, um, and sharing your thoughts with us. Thank you.
Before, before we adjourn, I'm gonna take one more statement, one more question. There's a young man who's sitting in front. I'd like to take a vote to allow this young man to speak. Is there a motion to let this young man speak?
Motion to let him speak.
Um, so I wanna make a little comment. Um, vans are actually more dangerous than big school buses. So that's a high percentage of kids getting more injured. So if the bo, if the van gets destroyed, that's gonna cost you more money than it's gonna give you if there is damage to any of the vans.
Thank you very much. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, uh, and enjoy your evening. Is there a motion to adjourn? Alright, this meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much.